All right, it's 5:00 PM and I'll ask, I would call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll, please.
Mr. Walbridge?
Present.
Little delay. Here.
Mr. Walbridge?
Present.
I'm here.
Mr. Tippett?
Here. Here.
Commissioner Wisman?
Here, present.
Mr. Sauer?
I'm twice here, I think.
Did you say my name? And I'm a present too, I don't know. I guess if we're gonna have problems again, I'll just either lock, or I'll see the attorney or I will start doing roll calls if we need to, just to help out. All right, first item is TIF development plan. Which staff member is gonna take that?
Mayor. I'm sorry, we did have a couple of public comments.
Oh yes, go ahead. Do you want to read those?
Uh, yes, although I don't have them pulled up. One second here.
Okay.
Can you all, can you all hear me?
Yes.
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 That I'm gonna go ahead and read them even though you can't see me?
We can see.
We can see you.
Okay. I can't see you all, okay. The first one is entitled Downsized YMCA. And it is from Mike Clark. And it says, Dear City Commissioners and YMCA Leaders, Would it be possible for any of you to educate me and others on this email about what is going on with the planning of a new downtown YMCA? I keep hearing people say that the plan is for a much downsized YMCA. Then I read through the current development agreement for parcel B and C and find this. As a non-exclusive example, the existing YMCA is deteriorating and unable to support a desire for more childcare options, health and fitness programs, and sports and recreation activities. Absent of a new facility, program offerings are at risk of being outsourced to other locations or canceled due to inadequate space. How are we going to correct the inadequate space problem by building a smaller YMCA? Also, I do not believe that the space in the current YMCA is underused. If you use the Y regularly, you can see that. I often find myself competing for space in the pool, for example. Please do not give us a downsized YMCA, especially the pool. Once a clean, nice, modern YMCA is built, it will be one of the most popular attractions in town and membership use will increase dramatically. Let's not build something that we will outgrow immediately. Also, please keep the public and members informed about what is going on. Thank you, Mike Clark. So that is one. Give me one second. Okay. This one is from Eric Northcutt. To the Frankfurt City Commission, I want to express my support for a potential TIF for the proposed development of parcel B and C. It is my understanding the document before you tonight is simply a statutory requirement and does not bind the city to any future commitment of funds. If we can't approve a routine document that is non-binding, or we delay approval of this document, then I think we are sending the wrong message to any developer that may be interested in taking a chance on our community. I fully support increased scrutiny on the future development agreements that will spell out our commitment of future tax revenues. We should all remember there will not be any future tax revenues if we do not develop the site and delaying the project will impact Frankfurt Independent School revenues more than any other entity. Please don't block the potential growth that this city is craving for. Thank you, Eric Northcutt, Frankfurt Concerned Citizen. And that's all we have.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Commissioner Tippett?
I'm not aware of any downsized plans for the YMCA. Maybe the city manager can address that?
We can actually discuss that. It was, it was okay to take the citizen comment?
Okay, okay, I just, is it okay for me to, is it okay for me to state publicly that I'm not aware of anything like that?
Well, you just did.
Thank you, Mayor.
We should probably not get too far on that.
I got you, I got you, thank you.
We, well, I think anything that we get citizen comments wise, we'll have our staff follow up on it with those that submitted citizen comments. I think that's okay to say.
Thank you for saying it, Mayor.
I'm sorry, it's just that we're just under the rules we have to follow. Next would be the TIF development plan. I'm not sure, city manager or city solicitor, or do we have another staff person that's going to make that one? City manager? Good to have you back.
This is, just wanted to bring back to you all, I believe this is the same exact draft we had at the last meeting. Don't believe we received any comments on the draft. Just wanted you all on board if we're gonna move forward with this. And I thought we, we needed a vote because there was some discussion about it last time.
Do any members wish to make any comments or ask any questions on that? Commissioner Wisman? I think it's Big Ben.
Can you guys?
I can't hear you right?
Yes.
Mayor, I just wanted to thank, I believe city solicitor sent us the final missing component of the TIF proposal, which was Exhibit A, which was a lengthy document. And now that receiving that and understanding that there has not been any alterations or updates, I'm more comfortable moving forward with this at this time. I think it is a fairly routine document, but last that we discussed it not having the full documents, I couldn't in good conscience move forward with it until we had the time to review it. But we've had a good proposal from our contractor now and I'm reviewing the full document here again. And it's, Mr. Northcutt's comments were appropriate that, you know, we are vested to do our due diligence in every action in this commission and without full information, I never want to take action until the community is apprised and we ourselves are apprised of all components that we're voting on. So this, Laura got us this document to believe it was Tuesday that we were, we were missing the final component and we were sure there's been no, no other changes from when it was previously presented to us. So thank you all.
Anyone else?
Mayor.
Commissioner Walbridge?
Go ahead, Patricia.
Right. I just wanted to take you back on Northcutt's response. I think that he hit the nail right on the head. I think this is something we need to continue moving forward with. I believe all the information that I've received, so I'm not sure, maybe Commissioner Wisman's having some email issues. I've received everything. I don't have anything new. Is there something that I'm missing that is new? It seems that I've had most of everything that I have in regards to this TIF and the actual Exhibit A. It was just listed as something differently. Am I incorrect on that, city manager? I thought we had most of this on, it started around, I want to say on February 7th and the 10th. And then we received some information also on June 6th as the follow-up on June 26th. So I just wanted to make sure that I've received everything that, Mr. Wisman keeps continuing to go back to say that he's just received something. I've not received anything different from months ago. Is there something that I'm missing or is it just maybe a lagging on his part of not receiving something in his personal email or something?
The Commonwealth Economics submitted a report, I think I sent you all in early February, and then they did a presentation, the TIF presentation that I think was a joint meeting. And they explained the economic numbers. And when the draft was sent back out, that report was just listed by name and instead of the full, as Commissioner Wisman indicated, it's a very large report. But it is the very same report that was sent in early February.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something because I had, I had, that was what I was looking over and I wanted to make sure what I was looking over to make my decision to move forward was going to be the correct information and not something new. Okay, that's what I was thinking. Okay, well, I move that we allow staff to continue on to move forward with our TIF and continue working on that as they have done diligently. And I'm very impressed and I'm excited for what's to come.
So Mayor, question?
Well, I gotta take a, is there a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Second by Commissioner Wisman, okay. Commissioner Tippett?
Now we entertain discussion, right? Okay, thank you. That's what, that's what I wanted to know. I have a couple of questions, that's okay, Mayor. First of all, you know, what, what seems to be concerning many people in the community is, you know, if we are to take responsibility for constructing infrastructure, especially the garage, are there ways for us to monetize that? And I know we don't need to be specific, but my gut tells me that we can monetize that. And another question I have for is, if we choose to take on this burden, which will be unfolded to us, the ask of the developer, will we be able to provide in-kind contributions that will drive the cash cost down? And is, do we have an idea of how much new money is included in that ask? Does that make sense, Keith?
Yeah, go ahead.
Let me try to answer, then you can follow up. The, uh, from the beginning, you know, the developer gave their presentation and on that night in February, they didn't really make an ask, but it, it was implied that they wanted 100% of our 20-year increased tax revenue. And under no circumstance would I have recommended you all to give away 100% of your 20-year tax revenue on that project. That is why we are aggressively going after a transit grant. We are speaking with state officials about potential state TIFs. So I think it is very appropriate for you all to be concerned about what kind of commitment we make. And, and I'm right there with you. I think we need to, we need to be smart about this. We, we didn't cause an issue with the parking garage contract with the hotel ownership that the previous administration did. We were handed this property with that issue. And if, if we're gonna continue forward, we need participation from several parties, not just us picking up that parking garage requirement. The money being in-kind services are gonna be tough. This is brand-new construction, you know, the new construction of a street, you know, we're geared for maintenance. We're not geared for new construction unless it's sewer, sewer lines. You know, we, we do repairs of curbs, we do pothole repairs, we do sidewalk work, but to build any of Washington Street would be a reach for us. I think most of ours will be a cash commitment, will be a commitment in grants if we can find any. It'll be state commitments that'll help offset our TIF contribution. But moving forward, we've got some really important agreements and, and we need to get a lot of public input. And honestly, we need to make sure the public knows we, we have their best interest at heart and, and we're not gonna give away everything, but we're gonna do this in a smart way and, and keep everybody informed on it.
Okay. That's your question, Commissioner?
Mayor?
Commissioner Sauer?
Patricia, just for clarity's sake and, and to make this a little bit cleaner, I understand that you're on board with this idea. The way it was titled on the agenda, Patricia, was the TIF development plan. So what you mean to say that you moved to accept or approve of the TIF development plan, correct?
Yes, and allow the staff to continue moving forward, yes.
Thank you, okay. Just trying to help you out, Charmaine.
And that's, yes, and then the backside was just to allow staff to continue to discuss what Keith just shared on the transit opportunities that we possibly could have.
Right, and Mayor, may I? We reserve the right to pull the plug on this project at any time if we feel like it's not conducive to our constituents.
Correct.
Yes.
Oh, I lost him. Go ahead, city manager. City manager?
I'd just like to add one thing. The next few steps would be to file the TIF development plan. We'll make sure you're okay with that. We'd file with the city clerk and we would start working with emergency management on how we might do the required public meeting to present the development plan. But all of that will be explained fully once we figure out a plan. But as Commissioner Walbridge's motion said, allow us to move forward. We will not be agreeing to, we may get some drafts ready on any future TIF agreements that you all will be privy to, but the only thing we'll move forward with is TIF development plan, file with the city clerk and, and start setting up some form of public meeting.
Any other questions before we vote? Commissioner Wisman?
You know, I just wanted to, to relate, as Keith already interjected there, that the next process would be a public meeting to understand what this, this development plan is. Again, it's called a development plan, but it is not. It is just a mutual agreement with the state that we're undertaking a project that we're interested in, in funding in this mechanism. This is not approving the final development plan of the contractor or the builder to construct this facility. That still has to go through the planning zoning process, through the zoning change that has to come back to us, very likely to approve, and a great deal of other work. So just in, in an effort to be transparent with the community, just wanting everyone to understand that there's still quite a lot of, of the process to do. And, and I think the next step is where we get very much in the weeds to define what level of support we're willing to give this project. We all know that it's going to take the full support of the county and the city together to make this, this project a reality, given our economic status in this community. But we, we can't fund this project at a level that bankrupts the city or gives precedent to this project over our day-to-day operations. So we have a very fine line, I think, to work with. And I would encourage our staff to have just very, very open communications with all of us and with the community as a whole as this progresses. There's already a lot of rumors flying around as we've heard about the YMCA. But also to, let's be creative, all of us. I'll challenge all of us to be creative in coming up with some, some alternative solutions such as how we can see the infrastructure built, some other grant funding that we can work with our, our consultants out of DC to come up with investment plans that don't subtract from our tax base from the future that might support our community in other ways, 20 years. It's a long way down the road to see what, what our town is going to need. But it's imperative, of course, that we have a unified front in this community to, to support this project and the future of our community.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we will go ahead and vote. Clark, please call the roll.
Commissioner Walbridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, item passes. Next item would be the 2020 Kentucky Legislative Update. I believe our city solicitor is going to handle this, correct?
Yes, that's right. So I sent you all a summary this week attached to the agenda of the bills that I think are of the most immediate importance to the city. I definitely encourage you all to go ahead and look at KLC's full legislative update because there are some others that are interesting and that you'll want to know about, but these are the ones with the most impact. This year, we have very few pieces of legislation that are gonna require immediate action on behalf of the city, no required ordinance changes. So that's all good news. We won't be scrambling to do these things. A lot of the legislation that was passed has delayed effective dates. So that's gonna give us, for some of these things that are gonna affect potential hiring decisions, training of emergency, our emergency staff, law enforcement, we're gonna have time to digest that and to prepare and to change our policies over months, if not years, before we see any major changes. So I just want to draw your attention, I know I'm not gonna read through this or anything like that, I just want to draw your attention briefly to a few that I think are, are kind of important. If you will, if you'll look at the administrative fees and lien filings, I divided these up into categories. Some good news is that we had a bill that corrected legislation that raised our lien filing fees. So we're now back down to $20 when we file our liens, that's a good thing. And staff can, can start paying that reduced fee. In our local agreements, I just want to point this out, we've just completed an interlocal agreement with the school district and it turns out that very soon, we will no longer have to actually file those for formatting purposes and beating the standards with the Attorney General. They have now exempted those agreements going forward. So that's good if we want to do those in the future. Of course, Senate Bill 150 was legislation, we just need to continue to occasionally look at the COVID-related rules and make sure we're staying in compliance as this thing goes forward. One big piece of legislation that I know KLC is excited about is the separation of CERS from KRS. That is going to occur, I know in this community there are mixed thoughts about that, but that is going to occur in 2021. So we can expect to be removed from the bigger retirement system here within the next year. Then, um, one final one, and this is something that will require immediate action, it's the only one, is that we're now required by law for any illegal advertisement that we have to publish to actually add a statement at the end that says this advertisement was paid for by the city of Frankfurt using taxpayer dollars in the amount of whatever it is. Can you all hear me?
Commissioner Tippett was gonna ask a question when you get through.
I'm sorry, well, that's about it. You all can read the rest for yourselves. Please feel free to reach out with me, to me with any questions you have and I'll be talking to department heads too.
Commissioner Tippett?
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Do we, do we expect that CERS will still have the reciprocal agreement with Teachers' Retirement and KERS? Or as Counting Service Credit?
Or, I'm sorry, for Counting Service Credit? They have not addressed that at this point. I haven't seen any indication that that is going to be something that will stop, but there will be a brand-new board. And I guess they will be making some of those decisions in the, in the years to come.
Well, I, I'm one of those folks who's blended. I've got 27 years in teachers and a little bit in CERS, so I'm very interested. Keep me updated, okay?
Absolutely, will do.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Laura, will there be a, I'm assuming KRS is going to send out a full synopsis, their usual bulletin? Do we know when those will be since nothing? A few of these changes are taking place this week, right? Going into effect this week?
Yes, that's right. And actually, you raise a good point. I think one other thing that's going on with retirement, there are several, and now I'm trying to locate it. I hope it's on here. If you will look at Senate Bill 249, the summary for Senate Bill 249, that one actually does talk about some changes. Some of them will be going into effect pretty quickly. Most legislation, unless it had a delayed effective date, goes into effect July 15th. I am assuming, because there's a lot of information and kind of a holding period on the, the actuarial CREB liability contribution, some of those more complicated provisions, I'm certain they'll be sending out information. I do not know when, but I'm gonna keep an eye out for anything coming down from KLC and from the retirement system. And I will update you guys as soon as we get some more information about how it works.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thanks. Next would be item number three, update on reopening preparations for City Hall and other city facilities and venues. Which staff member's doing that one? City manager?
I believe Tommy Russell.
Oh, Tom. Okay.
Tommy on the line. Yeah, you want me to, you want me to speak to that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we've looked at several options, trying to get City Hall back open to the public. I think it was in our best interest here lately because we've seen such an uptick in cases that I, we had a conversation and decided to push back the opening to the public, maybe into August the 3rd or the first week of August, something like that. I was trying to get it where fiscal court and City Hall could all open at the same time so there wouldn't be confusion to the public. So right now, we have just kind of delayed this. We have a couple of extra things that were, that still have to be done over in City Hall as we're gonna try to move the main entrance, and not the entrance per se, but the access for the public to the back of City Hall because that's, that's the ADA ramp and, and all that associated with that. And that gives us a way to harden the security on the building a little bit for the sake of our employees and even the public that's in there at some time should something happen. So that, that's just been a consideration with, with the mask rule going into effect. I didn't want to get in the middle of that with anybody. And then with the uptick in cases, I just asked that, that the mayor and I discussed it and the county judge and I discussed it, that we would delay the opening of City Hall and fiscal court back to the 3rd of August and then, and then revisit just before that.
Director Russell, did you have any further or does that, does that conclude your presentation? I think commissioners had questions.
That's got City Hall. Sean Pickens and I have addressed playgrounds and the rentals for the, those facilities, some of those shelters up there. We had talked about playground equipment also, which we don't have the ability to, they say they should be cleaned on a regular basis. We don't have enough staff to clean all of the playground equipment on a regular basis. And because, because they're such high-touch pieces of equipment, I suggested, suggested to Mr. Pickens that we leave the playground equipment closed for right now, for the time being until, so we can see if the, if the COVID issues subside some, since we're under a 30-day recommendation from the governor to mandate mask usage in the public. So that will take care of that. But our, our shelters are open for rental. That gets the bathrooms open and we're gonna clean those after every rental, so they'll be ready to go for the next time. We did address spring sport, or no, 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 not spring, fall sports. That was sent to the Parks Board to get their recommendation. I believe they, they, they recommended the same as that, as we had discussed, Mayor, that, you know, this is a, is a serious time and a dangerous time for, for those things and that to help prevent the spread of COVID-19 virus, that maybe we hold off on fall sports for the meantime and even cancel fall sports as far as what is, what is put on by the city. I'm sure Sean's on, on the line too, so he can address that farther or further. So we can go from there, but that, that was my recommendation and, and I think it's the correct one.
Okay. Do you have anything else on the presentations for city facilities?
Can you all remind me of anything that you've got questions about?
No, I didn't, I was gonna ask commissioners if they had any questions. I didn't know if you were finished and then I would ask commissioners for if they had questions. If you do, what's helpful, if you all just raise your hands, I can tell more if you want to be recognized. I've got, how many monitors here? One, two, three? I've got six monitors in front of me here, trying to keep up with you all. Okay. All right, well, thank you so very much for all the work and we appreciate all the staff time and all of this. We appreciate what you all are doing. I know it's hard on, on all of our staff, not just the department head level, but... but everyone's working to try to get things opened as quickly as possible and keeping all of our staff and crew protected and making them feel comfortable but still be able to do their job. And again, those of you that are essential workers that have to be out every day, we do appreciate all that you're doing. So again, our thanks from all of us. All right, next would be number four, the Esri contract renewal. This enterprise lease agreement for GIS software.
Can Bobby Ripley explain that?
Can I?
Yes, he's going to run in and get in front of a camera real quick.
Yes, sorry. This is our enterprise GIS software that we use at all levels, from City Hall up to public safety. So we just renew it every three years, and that's what this is. We renew the contract every three years.
Mayor, I'll move to approve.
Move back Commissioner Wisman?
Second.
Second back Commissioner Tippett? Have any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Walberg?
Yes.
Mr. Tippett?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Mr. Tippett?
Yes.
Wisman?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes. Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, item is adopted. All right. Next would be board appointments. I know the city clerk emailed.
Mayor?
Commissioner Sauer.
Mayor, I think we have an item five.
Oh, you know what? Yes, we do. I am so sorry. The printout I have here doesn't have that. Yes, we have. Number five is Fort Hill Park signage.
Yes. Mayor, members of the commission, this is merely a housekeeping issue and really a follow-up on the city manager's letter to Urban Woods Properties. And it has to do with the fact that they were operating under under a lease agreement with the city regarding, it's also regarding the sign ordinance and asking that they remove the Urban Woods Trail sign from the parking lot by the end of the month. So it's a follow-up of unfinished business, really. And then the rest of it has to do with individual signs throughout the park, which ought to be studied and referred to, of course, the historic sites, Museum and Historic Sites Board.
Mayor?
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes. As far as the signage for the historic sites, I've had a discussion with Mr. Pickens. We need to make sure that the community understands very plainly what the Military Road is. As I alluded to about a year ago this time, maybe a little longer, it's not very widely known in the community, but that Military Road was constructed by African-Americans who were held in bondage. In my way of thinking, it is second only to the Green Hill Cemetery in significance in African-American culture and history in Franklin County. Is a place of great reverence, is a sacrosanct, and it's incumbent upon the city to, you know, protect that Military Road as a sacrosanct historic site, especially in regards to African-American history. I think we've been a little remiss historically. The city has in not recognizing the contributions of African-Americans to our society and our city culture. What a great homage and tip of the hat the city can do if we clearly identify that as work done by our citizens, our ancestor citizens who were held in bondage and made the trip into modernity and into freedom. So I suggest to staff that we find some way to commemorate that Military Road in an appropriate fashion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. City manager?
I'd be glad to ask Sean Pickens to come back to you all with a proposal. We'll use the attachments from Commissioner Sauer and maybe involve the Parks Board, Museum Board about a signage plan. And I will reach out to the owners of Urban Woods about the current sign in the parking lot. I've been told that's changed hands, but I'm not sure. What I would suggest is we look, all that's tied up into an old deed restriction, that property, we actually own that parking lot, but they have use of it between 5:00 PM and 8:00 AM. And we can use it between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. I think that needs to be updated or something changed to clarify, you know, who can do what, what's where. And I'll reach out to the new ownership, and I'll get something to you all, updating you for another discussion. Sean will get something to you on a potential signage update.
Thank you.
What is the particular issue in regards to the Urban Woods sign key?
Well, the parking lot, big sign, it's named our Military Trail, calling it the Urban Woods Trail. I guess anybody can stick a sign in their yard, but it's actually on our property. Parking lot, like I said, they have rightened usage of that parking lot from 5:00 PM to 8:00 AM. But that needs to be corrected as well. You know, there's probably second shift people that work there. We probably want public to be able to access it till dark so they can get on the Military Road Trail. So what I'd like to do is reach out to either the new ownership or existing ownership and figure up a solution to these issues. Ask them to remove the one sign, and all that can be tied together.
Mayor May?
Commissioner Wisman?
Keith, the, back in January, we noticed the property owners to remove some signs that talked about towing cars. Have those been removed? Last I was there, it's been months ago, but they had not been at that point.
Yes, they have been removed. I did a follow-up phone call with the owner, and they removed them that day. We had sent a letter, but it took a little follow-up phone call, but they did remove the code at owner's expense.
You know, this property, the original agreement with the city was at a point that this property was owned by the Housing Corporation and was operating in a wholly different manner. I think it's high time that we review the ownership or usage of that parking lot. So I would encourage so. And Commissioner Sauer didn't send us some recommendations for signage, which I wholly agree. We actually, I believe, directed the museum staff to come up with an entire interpretive package for Fort Hill that reflected the full spans of its history. Of course, that was before COVID. And I believe we'd ask for those recommendations to come back in June. But I understand that we have a different situation now. But we need to be proactive. I agree with my fellow commissioners in developing the interpretation of that site. I was up a few weeks ago, reading the interpretive signage that I had not looked at since I was in high school on the hill when it was new, when we just made it a park. And, you know, the one section, one sentence, and one sign talks about anything other than directly related to the battle about the African-American homestead that was there following the war and nothing about the archaeological prehistory or even the Blattons lineage of the park prior to the Civil War. We need to take a more active role in interpreting what is really a huge asset to our downtown community, if nothing else, but our whole community. And hopefully, that can be incorporated. I would like it to be more so into the park plan that we're engaging in so that we have cohesive messaging and design and that kind of thing in the end. But I think we can come up with some temporary, immediate ways to reflect some of that history much more better than we are currently. So I'd like to see that come back to us soon.
All right, Commissioner Sauer?
Yes, I agree with you, Eric, regarding the interpretive signs. I'm all for those, and hopefully, they are in the budget. I was highlighting really the signature signs, not only at Urban Woods, which, you know, again, Keith, I think we need to get back to the commission, say, by the next meeting on the 27th, and maybe have some good news that that is taken down. But signage also that appears there at the entrance of the main park, this forgotten cemetery is item number four. The archaeological sites is item number five. And, you know, I realize, again, the Museum Board and Historic Sites are going to go through this and make the final recommendations. But I'm hoping that they will do that at the next meeting.
May I add?
Absolutely, go ahead, Commissioner.
I just wanted to add, you know, as an African-American, I truly appreciate the justice as far as pulling up and wanting to make note to African-American history as putting up signs and making trails and things of that nature. But I just really would like to put a plug in now that as African-Americans in the Black Lives Matter movement, it's bigger than just a sign. It's bigger than taking down statues and replacing them. As African-Americans, we're looking for more roles in leadership. We're looking for more roles to be appointed, to be put on committees, on boards. We're looking for more diversity within our police department, EMS, our city staff. This is the things that we, as African-Americans across the border, are trying to speak up for for social justice. We do appreciate the signs and appreciate taking down statues, but it's much larger than that. So I just wanted to put in a plug there. This is what we're looking for moving forward for diversity, inclusion within our city. We take small steps, and those are small steps. But we have to look beyond just signs, beyond statues, in doing that. So I just ask that maybe over the next few weeks that we, as city staff, look at ways to implement that diversity and inclusion and the unity within our city. And I appreciate you, Scott, in bringing up the sign again because it does, and as Eric said, you know, a lot of that history on Fort Hill isn't being talked about. It's only the surface areas that's being talked about. And if we're going to do it, we should do it correctly. And I'm supporting in all history on Fort Hill. But I just want to speak up for that at this moment, being that it was topic of discussion, so, sorry.
Mayor? Yeah. Thank you, Patricia, Commissioner Walridge. Your point is well-taken and spot-on. Can you guys hear me? Hear me?
Yes.
You know, Commissioner, and I know that, you know, this is probably going to surface in the discussion of the upcoming election in the fall. But we really need to take a really hard look at our hiring practices in the city. You know, last, this was an issue, Commissioner Patricia. We sat together on a panel, I believe, at KSU. And this question was handed to us about, you know, the very minuscule, small percentage of minority folks who we hire. And it's 3%. And we have 17% African-American or minority population in the city in 3%. And fewer than that percentage are in leadership positions.
Commissioner Tippett, sorry.
You want to stop me, Mayor?
Unfortunately, I agree with everything you're saying. But our city solicitor is saying that we need to get back on to the topic at hand. So again, sorry for that.
Okay, then, do I still have the floor?
You do have the floor for items that are on the agenda.
Do I still have the floor?
You do.
Yes, for the Fort Hill thing. What I think needs, what I think the history of this that is not well-known, okay, is that why the appropriate signage is so desperately needed is? Is our fellow human beings were held in bondage and were not freed by the Emancipation Proclamation. Okay? So these folks are doing this work for the citizens of Kentucky and the citizens of Frankfurt with no recognition and no remuneration. They were conscripted. That's the point I'm trying to make. And it is time for us as a city and a body to shift the paradigm. It's just time, okay? And I agree with Commissioner Walridge that the sign is a good first step. But we need substantive change and a paradigm shift for social justice and equal justice, as written in the 14th Amendment, Ms. Ross. Thank you.
Commissioner Walridge?
Keith, is there a possibility that we could ask the master plan consultant for recommendations on the signage for Fort Hill as well?
Yeah, I think that would be a good resource for us to use. I don't know if that meets the timeline of this board, but we are conveniently in a master planning process that I think could assist with that.
Thank you. And just to plug in, I know, Laura, it's so bad, but the PD is accepting applications now. So please, anyone that is listening, apply to our PD.
And just coming back to the, Mayor, just coming back to the origin, really, I don't mind the master plan reviewing what we propose. But I think we ought to go through the museum and the historic sites, staff there, board, and let them work on it and then present that perhaps to the master plan that Branstad and Carroll is doing. We're home, folks. We're here on the ground. We know the issue better than Branstad and Carroll does. And I think we can come up with a plan and get their approval on it, if you so deem.
What is your pleasure on this item, board members?
Sorry, Mayor, I can hardly hear you.
Oh, Sam, what is your pleasure, board members, on this particular item today?
I think you said, what's our pleasure on this item? Okay. Commissioner Sauer, you have the floor.
Yeah, move to approve Commissioner Sauer's proposal initiative on the signage for Fort Hill, Mayor.
Oh, okay. Move back Commissioner Tippett? And he's a second. And did someone second?
I will second and then have a follow-up question.
Okay. And then the city manager wants to say?
Commissioner Tippett, is that directive to accept the recommendation that Mr. Sauer made to send the text of his proposal to the museum staff to flesh out? I believe that was his recommendation to us and proceed appropriately through staff?
Yes, and if I need to amend that motion, I'll gladly do it with some assistance from the grammarians. Can we, Mayor, can I amend my motion to say inclusive, including museum staff in the process?
Yes, I'm going to just, let me just do a quick voice vote. Make that be an amendment. Is there a second to that amendment? Someone second Commissioner Tippett's amendment? Can they hear me?
Mayor, can you maybe move a little closer to the mic?
They should be. Did someone want to second Commissioner Tippett's motion? Okay, second back Commissioner Wisman. Any discussion on that? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Okay, I heard three. All right, so that's amended. City manager?
Okay, I want to make sure we're doing exactly what you want us to do. I think Commissioner Sauer wanted the involvement of the museum board as well. If Sauer wanted the involvement of the museum board as well. Uh, if, if we just got a clear direction to use museum staff, uh, what I would suggest, what I think Commissioner Sauer would like to see is we provide his suggestions to museum board and staff. They, uh, work up some suggestions for signage, share them with master plan consultant. And within, by the next meeting, try to get that one sign removed, but also have a draft of how we might modify that deed, uh, for that parking lot.
That's a correct interpretation.
I've got a new microphone. Is that better?
Much better. Much better.
I must be cursed. We're laughing.
Off the question, Mayor.
All right, this would be on the original motion as amended. Um, all those in favor, sign, um, well, I'll, I'll let the city's, city clerk try to do a roll call. If not, we'll just do a voice. Oops, she's not there. All right, I'll tell you what then. Yeah, let me just go ahead and, we'll just stop. I'll just do, I'll just do a voice vote. All those in favor of the, of the motion as amended signify by saying ayes and raise your right hand, please. Aye.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed? Like sign. Okay, thank you. All right, now we've got a new mic. Um, thank you all. Next would be board appointments. Um, the first one is a new appointment. The other four are reappointments, so we can take the first one by itself. And if you want to take the other four together as reappointments, we can do that. If you want to do them individually, I'll, that is up to you guys and ladies.
Can we just make a motion for do it en masse, Mayor?
Yeah, unless they're individually, I'm fine.
Unless somebody has a question. Commissioner Sauer? Um, Commissioner Sauer, you are muted, sir. There we go.
I'm sorry, I withdraw my question.
Mayor, I'll move.
Commissioner Tippett, now there's the delay. Commissioner Tippett, did you make a motion for that? I'm, I, you cut out on me.
Yes. Okay, Mayor, I move that we, uh, approve all mayor, all mayor appointments as designated on items, board items, one through eight en masse.
Mayor, I second the motion.
All right, motion back Commissioner Tippett, second back Commissioner Wisman. Is there any discussion on this?
Yes, I, I'd just like to say, Mayor, I appreciate particularly, are you okay, Mayor? Okay, I just wanted to say in particular, Mayor, I appreciate your appointment of Catherine Dutton, Dutton Mitchell. Uh, I've seen her, uh, advocate for her position. Uh, I've known her. Uh, I know her parents. I know her brother over in Shelbyville where we lived previously for several years. And, uh, she will be in a, a wonderful addition to the electric and water plant board, and I thank you for that nominee.
Thank you. Any others?
Um, I just wanted to sort of piggyback. Um, I was looking over her application. I, I didn't see any others come through, so I assumed she was a lone submission, but she had two great references, uh, Hank Hancock and Carrie Smith Esquire. Um, she had a lot of great work experience. Um, she was very truthful and very authentic in her, uh, question of saying she didn't really know much about power generation, water and telecom. However, um, she's done, you know, research and, and a lot of her administration law, civil rights advocacy, management of small teams of employees and budgets, funds of nonprofits that will assist her, um, and help make this board stronger. Um, and she's also on, uh, the historic preservation board. It was a secretary, it looked like. So I think she's, um, I think she's a good choice. So, um, yeah, I appreciate it. I didn't see any others come through, so.
Okay, any others? Thank you. All right. And someone said after Commissioner Tippett and I left Frankfurt High, she was the smartest person to come after us. I don't know if that's true or not. I, I can't speak for myself, Commissioner, but I, I know you were pretty, pretty smart and she was.
Well, she's, she's from a strong family.
She very is. She really is.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, any other questions or comments? If not, uh, all those in favor of the board appointments signify by saying aye and raising your right hand so I can see? Those opposed? Like sign? All right, if those are adopted, thank you. I think next item would be, uh, discussion of the tentative agenda for the 27th. Are there any questions about the Ju, I'm sorry, July 27th? Wow, it's already July. July 27th agenda. Commissioner Sauer?
Uh, Mayor, only one issue that I'm in discussion with, with the city manager, uh, as well as the sewer department, uh, director, and that is on the Fort Boone pump station. Uh, we're in, we're working on that and, uh, hope we can have a, a go on the 27th.
Any others on the agenda? If not, uh, next time it'd be a closed session.
All right, I did not, I did not see it on the agenda. I'm sorry, Mr. Commissioner Wisman, did you say?
Mayor Walbridge?
Mayor, there's just several, quite a few items with, uh, information to be provided, that I have hesitancy on until we see those. If those come in late, um, there's, there's a lot to consider that, um, I may request that we delay discussing some of these if we don't have the information, um, prior to, you know, Friday, but, um, before the, this, but, um, no, no action to take at this point, just to concern that we need some information about a number of items that have been proposed.
Commissioner, uh, I mean, uh, city manager can answer your questions and then Commissioner Walbridge had a question. Commissioner, uh, city manager?
Yeah, I'd be glad to answer. If you have a particular item you have questions about, we'll work on all the attachments, uh, for the week, the meeting in two weeks. We'll try to get them out even maybe earlier than next, or the Friday before. But if you have some, uh, particular interest, please reach out and we'll be glad to, uh, update you.
And I think staff wanted to just get those on there as placeholders to, in anticipation of having that information available so that, um, the commission would be aware that those were coming. Uh, not to speak for staff, I just know that's how they think. All right, Commissioner Walbridge?
Um, I did not see on the consent calendar an update for your mayor update on social justice meeting. You had purposely put it on the meeting before, on that Monday, you ended up adding it. Um, and there was going to be an update. I did not see it on here and I was wondering if you could give us an update on that particular phone call on social justice meeting with the mayor?
Absolutely.
I am, okay, so I would like that put on there. Um, also, um, with the YMCA question with the city manager, is there any way that we can put, um, sort of put something on here to do like a quick update in where we are with this particular process with the YMCA? We've been sitting dormant because we've been doing, you know, other things on our, on our agenda, and I think we do need to give the community on where we are, we're updating because our office isn't open for our community to come in all the time. And so I think maybe giving them an update on what's going on around the YMCA, what's going on with Parson B. If we could have that update, it'd be greatly appreciated. I'm sorry, go ahead, Keith.
Yeah, I'd be glad to give an update. Actually, I spoke to the YMCA today. Uh, we're gonna be on a conference call with them tomorrow with our grant consultant. I had sent them a potential grant, and now we're gonna speak about leveraging our two and a half million dollar commitment as towards a possible federal grant. So I have more to update after our call tomorrow.
Yeah, if they could just have a couple of updates, I mean, nothing for approving, just to keep the community abreast in what's going on. Um, also, um, I guess I'll be talking to Katie, I'll speak with her tomorrow in regards to Wondell Robinson's sign going up, um, and how we will proceed on with that to make sure the spelling of his name is correct, um, and that we can move forward with that. So I think that's, as of right now, I think that's what I have. If I can have those two updates definitely on there and then I'll work with Katie on the other. That's what I have.
Staff will, duly noted, staff will make, we, y'all take notes on that. Let's see how it's, okay. All right, uh, if there's no other agenda items, we have a closed session. If that's your desire.
May I read it, Mayor?
Please.
Mayor, I move that we go into executive session per KRS 61.810 subsection 1 subsection B deliberations on future acquisition of real property related to a new fire station and public infrastructure where publicity would likely affect the value of the property.
All right, move back Commissioner Wisman? Does require a second. Second back Commissioner Walbridge, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your right hand. Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Like sign? All right, thank you. We are in executive session.